Call to order this meeting of the Beverly School Committee and the Beverly City Council, a joint meeting. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Please. Here. Mayor Cahill? Flora? Flora? Dogman?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers?
Here.
Lady?
Here.
Houseman?
Here.
Lady?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Rotundo?
Here.
Abel?
Here.
Quansey?
I am here. Councilor Houseman, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mr. President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. School committee members, we are very lucky to have Councilor Houseman do that for us, a remote meeting, except for maybe one, Councilor Rand had to fill in for him. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, I know.
Mr. President Quansey, I think Ms. Visnick raised her hand. I don't know if she got called during the roll call.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Rotundo. I did not, in fact, get called during the roll call.
But you are here.
You are here. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here too. Good to see everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill.
Script for remotely conducted city council meetings, joint meeting with school committee, Thursday, December 17th, 2020. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Quansey, President of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I am confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Not everybody?
Yeah.
Great. Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open-meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does not have public participation. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recorder. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me or President Abel. To reduce background noise and feedback, please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. And as mentioned earlier, all our votes will be, when we get to Agenda Item 5, the appointments of the Ward 2 school committee will be roll call votes. Any questions or comments before we move on? If you do have a question or comment, just type me in the chat. That's what we've been doing at the city council. It seems to work okay. I tend to forget that hand down the bottom of the... Councilor Flaherty?
Yes, you talked about the procedure, how we're supposed to go about it. And you might disagree with my thoughts, but to me, I know that I understand how the charter works with the joint meeting, and the city council, and the school committee having equal say in this. But I don't know what others think, but I think it's, to me, it shouldn't be the city council necessarily making this decision alone. I'd like to see personally with the school committee, they're gonna have to work with one of these three, what their prerogative is. I wouldn't want to see us pick a candidate that the majority of the school committee want to work with somebody else. To me, it behooves the school committee to go first, and then kind of have an idea of where they're headed, and then we can kind of move forward. I know everybody's thoughts are on that, but to me, if the city council picks one candidate, and the other, and the school committee picks the other, I'd rather, especially with the situation that's gone on before, I think that is a good idea to have the school committee have almost more of a say in this whole process. Charter does not dictate which way we can do it. I just think, out of respect to the school committee, that they should be, have, I'm not saying major, but have a bigger say in this discussion.
Thanks, Councilor Flaherty. Ms. Visnick?
I appreciate that thought. Mr. Flaherty, I actually asked the school committee president this morning how, what order was gonna be, and I agree with you. I think that it also puts the state councilors in a difficult position, so I absolutely appreciate your thoughts, and personally, I agree with you. I don't know what mechanism we have, if any, to implement that change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick. President Abel?
Yes, this was a topic that we discussed with our school committee council, and we recognize that the voters of Ward 2 have elected, in part, the three at-large councilors, as well as their counselor for Ward 2. And while it's not prescribed in our charter, because I don't imagine the charter authors had anticipated that there wasn't going to be a runner-up or a second runner-up for elected offices, we did consider the fact that this is a decision, really, that would typically lie with the voters, and that the city council did have a role, in fact. And we had investigated the fact that if we had many candidates and needed to entertain a down-selection, it would be important to include city councilors, since they represent the voters of Ward 2, so.
Thank you, President Abel. Councilor Flaherty?
I appreciate that and respect that. I don't necessarily agree with everything with that said. Can there be a discussion amongst the school committee? I understand that we have a vote, and I understand that, but can the school committee maybe talk amongst themselves a little bit? Can we ask questions of the school committee? You know, and do that, and get a feel of where the school committee is with that? I think we could do that, and then we can do the vote? I don't know if you guys would agree with that?
I'm open. I'm very, I don't want to say I'm very casual, but I'm very, I'm open to anybody's suggestions or comments. Ms. Visnick?
I wish to offer that the school committee of late has been doing, operating our meetings such that before any motions come forward, we kind of do a round, maybe more than one round, of just discussion, right? Does anybody have any thoughts, anything, like, questions they want to ask? And that gives everyone an opportunity to speak and be heard before any motions are put on the table. And I think that that is a way to help, to help let everybody have the discussion that perhaps you're hoping to hear, Councilor Flaherty. If we follow that same mechanism, even though there's now many, many more people in this meeting, I think that the end result will be exactly what you're hoping for.
Thank you. President Abel?
Sure. This is another topic that we had investigated, and with appointments, just like we appoint a superintendent, questions really are supposed to be developed and devised by the body in advance of the meeting, and they're supposed to be equal, so I would caution us against having questions, clarifying questions before. I, you know, I understand that the school committee will be working with this person. I don't think that there's any wrong decisions here tonight, so I would hope that after we hear from the candidates, that we entertain a motion and are able to proceed under Robert's rules. I'm a little nervous that if we start to ask questions, or start to have deliberations outside of a formal motion being presented, we wouldn't be truly following Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you, President Abel. Anybody else before we move on? All right, I would love to introduce Mr. William Burke III, the Director of Public Health, and Teresa Kirsch, who is the public health nurse, to talk about this COVID situation here in the City of Beverly. Mr. Burke?
Yes, thank you, President Quansey. I hope I can, being heard all right. Thank you for inviting me. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the city council and school committee and Mayor Cahill. I'll give you kind of a brief synopsis of our activities, and certainly Teresa Kirsch, as mentioned, public health nurse is on the line. She can add in as necessary and needed, and can fine-tune some of my comments, and certainly would be open to questions after that, so without any, if there's no objection to that method, I'll just give you a brief synopsis, you know, as you know. Well, first, I want to thank you for the resolution that the council passed a few weeks back, recognizing the Health Department for all the efforts we've done around pandemic, COVID pandemic, since really beginning in February of last year. And I also, before I forget, you know, certainly want to, you know, I can't thank my staff enough. Each and every one of the staff members, from admin to inspectors, and certainly public health nurse, and associated part-time nurses that we've brought on board, so again, thank you very much. We appreciate that. As you probably know, the public health nurse has been responsible for investigating positive cases of disease. You know, in this case, COVID now, we do part of communicable diseases, part of our regular duties, foodborne illnesses, Lyme disease of the such, for examples. We've hired four part-time school, excuse me, part-time nurses to help us with our contact tracing and case investigation. The numbers continue to increase. Not a surprise. You probably see the news every day. As a result, we're seeing more and more positive cases, and in a lot of cases, the number of their contacts has increased as well. We're at the point now, we're saturated, our current capacity with nurses and staff. We have turned more and more cases over to the CTC, which is the Community Tracing Collaborative that you've seen the Partners in Health run. They have, experiencing their own surge capacity issues as well. They are continuing to bring staff. But I do want to be clear that before anything is handed over to CTC, the public health nurse Teresa Kirsch does review them, so we hold on to children and cases where there might be facilities of concern. Obviously, you know, children and families, you know, we want to keep an eye on the school population and so forth. One of those part-time nurses is dedicated liaison between the Health Department and the School Department. Joyce Pryor, a former school nurse at one point, retired now, has been doing a great job as kind of that intermediary, and helped coordinate with any cases in the schools. Up until yesterday, we've been averaging about 20 to 30 new cases, positive cases, per day. That being said, yesterday we had 40, and today there's 34. We're seeing, you know, community transmission with no specific sector, although many sectors have been affected, experiencing positive cases. I mean, sectors, that would be, you know, could be anything from fitness places to restaurants, to workplaces, to manufacturing, to schools, colleges. So again, no smoking gun, per se, that they're acquired there, but just more that, you know, people are, they're going out to eat, they're going to gyms, they're, you know, kids in daycare, schools, grocery shopping. So the economy is pretty much open. Fortunately, unlike the spring, if you see the graphs in the papers daily, certainly we're having a lot more positive cases now than we did in the spring, but to date, the hospitalizations have been fewer than they were in the spring. However, those are trending upward as well. Right now, you know, the hospitals seem okay, but certainly there is concern, as these trends continue, what three weeks or a month might bring. We still have major holidays on the calendar yet to go through, New Year's as well, so we'll see how that plays out. Excuse me. And you know, the increased cases are reflected in our community data, the community dashboard, the community data comes out weekly on Thursday evenings, right around now, 6 o'clock-ish. Just the last few weeks, and again, it's calculated on a 14-day running total, so the report released on the 3rd of December, we had a 1.98 positivity rate. Last week, 3.45, and Teresa estimates, you know, a number for this week will be about 4.67%. Certainly, I'll turn it over to Teresa, two in a minute, but I just wanted to mention the inspectional side of things of the department. We have two full-time inspectors, and we've hired a part-time inspector, you know, around COVID. They continually enforce the state guidance, the sector guidance that comes out for what can be open, and what safeguards have to be in place for those. We, you know, answer field questions and provide outreach to numerous businesses and community people that may reach out to us, and certainly to our admin staff is constantly getting calls from the travel order to anything under the sun, and they, you know, again, I just can't thank the staff enough for their ceaseless dedication to this, deferring time off, vacations, holidays, and everything else, so. Teresa's on the call. Teresa, certainly feel free to add or, you know, anything that I might have said, and certainly that's pretty much all I have for, you know, kind of the introductory, and then we could probably open it up for questions if the council so chooses in the school committee. Thank you.
I'll just add something. This is Teresa. The dashboard's out today, so the positivity rate over the last 14 days is 4.67. The average daily incident rate per 100,000 for the last 14 days is 56.5 for Beverly.
So again, it reflects, you know, the trend, not a positive trend. If Teresa has nothing else, maybe certainly President Quansey, we can entertain any questions that anybody might have.
President Quansey's on mute.
Thank you very much. I had to have a helper come in and fix my computer. Any questions for members of the school committee or city council? Councilor Houseman, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Burke, thank you, and you and your staff for all the work you do and the information you've given us this evening. You know, other than masks and social distancing and keeping contacts to, you know, the minimum, you know, we're still seeing community spread. Are there any general guidelines beyond, you know, sort of the standard recommendations that citizens in Beverly can follow to help try to bring in those, you know, bring the curve back down? We all know what the rules are, so if we have community spread at that level, how can we, you know, what action can the general citizen take to try to address what's going on? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Houseman. I think the guidance is there. It's layered guidance. Again, it's all risk reduction. It doesn't prevent anything, but I think if, you know, you wear the mask and social distance, and, you know, I, one thing I see, especially with the holidays, is sometimes folks confuse kindredship or blood relatives with, you know, a safe, you know, again, it's, sometimes I hear people say, "Well, I trust them." I say, "Well, we're not worried about them stealing your wallet. We're worried about, you know, where have they been, and where do they work, and where do they, you know, where do they interact?" So I think, I know I've had to have some tough conversations with, I'm still fortunate enough to have my 85-year-old mother, you know, who lives alone. You know, my sister and I, you know, bring her groceries to keep her home. She does do a few appointments, but again, I spend a little time, and if I'm in her house to fix something or just tend to something, a mask, again, it's really that, you know, guidance, I had a daughter, again, sorry for the personal things, but I think it gives a good example, is I had a daughter that just got an apartment two months ago, and now I say, "Well, you know, you're not in the same household." So I said, "Well, I'm your daughter," and I said, "Yes, but you need a ride. We're both wearing masks, and we're keeping the window open." You know, you can't go see your grandmother, or if you do, you know, talk to her from the doorway, or something like that. So again, it's been painful. I understand people are a little fatigued or tired, but when you really think about a simple mechanical thing as a mask, you know, we're not, you know, look at, they moved heaven and earth to get vaccine ready, and, you know, but the mask is probably the most basic prevention we can do. And I mentioned vaccine, although very encouraging, very, you know, promising. I hope people don't take it as like it's over now. We still have a long way to go. Long, you know, maybe not in duration of time, relatively speaking, but there's a lot to be done. And it's a two-dose series of the vaccine. You know, it's one of the largest vaccination efforts ever in this country. So far, so good. We're still waiting to clarify some of our role. We may be, you know, certainly have a role in the vaccination on top of the surveillance and disease investigation. So again, I think Councilor Houseman, you nailed it when you just said, the guidance is there, and it works, but it has to be practiced consistently, and, you know, multiple things, the distancing, the masking, the limiting your social engagement, so I think I beat that to death, so, but thank you. And certainly, public health nurses here that can certainly, maybe more eloquently describe some things as well.
I think you got it, Bill.
Follow up? Teresa's good. Hi, any other questions for Mr. Burke or Ms. Kirsch? Why are you guys getting off easy? Thank you both for being here. I understand how busy you are, and you both must be exhausted.
I'm sorry, President Quansey, it looks like President Abel had typed me in the chat. I don't know if it came through at the same time as Scott.
Mr. Burke actually answered my question. Mr. Houseman prompted him perfectly.
Sorry to interrupt. Thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
No question. I just want to take a minute to thank Bill and Teresa. You folks have thanked them publicly, and I have, but we can never do enough right now. You know, I've worked with Bill and Teresa for just about seven years, and Bill and I have known each other and worked together for more like going on 30, but this year, I've worked more closely with them than ever before, and they are both amazing. They're both incredible resources for our community, and there's no way to thank them enough for what they have been and continue to do every day. And I want to take that further and mention Joe Realy and Dave Goodwin, our full-time inspectors in the Health Department. Also, just true professionals, and the work that they have been doing with all the different sectors of our community, particularly our business community, who all are trying their very best to comply and stay alive financially, and obviously keep everybody alive health-wise. So, you know, there are too many people to thank, but this small core group in our Health Department are truly top-notch, and we're blessed and lucky to have them, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. Yeah, just a follow-up about Joe and Dave. They are, they're amazing. They're not out to punish. They're out to educate and help. And I think that, that approach that they use, especially up and down Cabot and Rain Tool Street, makes people want to comply as much as possible and follow the rules, so that they can be safe, their customers can be safe, and their employees can be safe. So your office is doing a great job, Mr. Burke.
Thank you both, Mayor Cahill and President Quansey, and President Quansey, you absolutely nailed it. We are education and outreach, and our compliance efforts are only as good as the people we're regulating. And Mr. Realy has a long history, Mr. Goodwin not as long, but we all practice the same philosophy, that we're here to service, you know, the community, the businesses, and like I said, you know, the law gives us a big stick if we need it. We know where it's kept, but, you know, we have a history of working with the food establishments and every other business that we have enforcement authority over. And like I said, I want to thank them, because, you know, the rules get changed on them, you know, they're probably wondering at night, "Yes, we're busy, but I know I have a job in the morning." You know, a lot of these businesses, you know, are struggling, and that's the tough part for the inspectional staff, too. They feel that. They know these people. They see them struggling and suffering, and again, it is truly a partnership, so again, I won't elaborate too more, but I think that's an important point for health. A lot of times, you just think of, you know, the health inspector, they're here to shut you down, or, you know, but we're here to keep you open more than shut you down. But again, thank you all. Thank to Mayor Cahill for his support, and he's got his sleeves rolled up right with us, and, you know, we appreciate it, and again, I can't just thank my staff enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Everybody good? Great job. Much appreciated. So now I'll turn everything over to School Committee President Rachel Abel, and she'll let us know how the rest of the meeting is going to go. President Abel?
Thank you, President Quansey, and thank you, council members and school committee members. Thank you all for being present this evening. I would like to also thank the seven members of the community in Ward 2 that specifically reached out to me to indicate their interest in filling the balance of the Ward 2 school committee term. Tonight, we welcome three candidates who formally expressed their interest, and they present this joint council with a very large challenge: how to pick from such a qualified pool of people with such an apparent commitment to our students, and with experiences that will only enhance our committee. So we have asked the candidates here this evening to present to us about three minutes of remarks to help us decide why we should pick them over their neighbor, to fill the vacancy. Based on the materials that we were each provided in advance from the candidates, I don't think there is a wrong decision. But before we hear from the candidates, I just wanted to highlight for a moment some of our Home Rule Charter. I wanted to specifically emphasize how our charter in Section 4-1 Subsection F first assumes that we have runners-up or multiple runners-up for our elected positions. The joint council appointment is just a backstop for when there is not one, as is the case in Ward 2. In early April, I hope I see all three of these candidates at the City Clerk's Office picking up papers to run for reelection, or for election. And to all of the other candidates or potential candidates out there who have considered a run for office, I would encourage you as well to yield to the call of duty. I think that we can agree that local government and our local leaders are ultimately where the important decisions are being made during this time of crisis, and this COVID-19 virus has shown us just how strong we are in our community together. I do not believe that any one of us on this mobile meeting application tonight imagined when we pulled our papers in April of 2019 that we would be stretching so much. that we would be stretching so much, stretching what it means to serve, whether it is learning how to use this telecommuting for open meetings, or whether it is planning how to stay socially distanced from our neighbors and loved ones while trying to keep our lives moving forward, or whether it is helping to find food and resources to help each other during this economic downturn. We are also facing issues of equity and justice that have systemically placed greater burdens on some members of our community than others. And unlike any other year, we are being asked to stretch and grow and bend all without breaking. Serving one's community is always important, and I think as an elected group, we have done important work in the past. But we are presently doing some really important work. We have reopened our schools. We have made adjustments for our local businesses to help them stay afloat. And we are preparing to discuss our FY22 budget and our budget priorities, which may be some of the hardest work we have yet to do. We are truly working through unprecedented times. So it's fair to say we all have an additional level of commitment this year, and we all are leaning in to the hard work and some of the harder decisions. So tonight's decision is one to add a member to the school committee, someone who will be an important voice at the table starting January 1, 2021, as we prepare what may be the most challenging school budget to date. And so, without further ado, we will hear from each of our candidates in alphabetical order. At the conclusion of the remarks, and only at the conclusion of the remarks, the chairs will look for a member to be recognized to make a motion. And with a proper second, according to Robert's rules, we will deliberate. All the votes are to be called by a roll call vote, and Ms. Kent will call the roll for us also in alphabetical order. This is due to the remote nature of the meeting that we must use a roll call vote. I would say that we will be mixing both the school committee and city councilors alphabetically, and the chairs will be called last. For this vote, it is just a simple majority that is required by our charter, and we will, again, follow Robert's Rules of Orders for our motions. And with that, I just wanted to remind my school committee fellows that we're using me as the indicator and not the hand raise in the chat for later. It's my pleasure to welcome the three candidates. Alphabetically, Ms. Georgia Bills, we'll hear from you first.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Hello? All right. Great. Thank you. Before I launch into my 592 words that I've prepared, I want to just take a moment to thank both groups of people that are in front of me tonight, although on a little screen. And I think that the work that you've been doing and the continuity of it and the hard decisions, no one takes lightly. So I just, I want to say that when you're all in one place and I have, I have your ear. So, thank you. I'm honored to be here to talk. And hang on, here's 592 words of how I got here. I know myself to be a person who is well-versed in group decision-making. My stomach has churned making tough decisions for other people's children. I have proven myself as a patient person who listens well. I know how to focus intently and keep working, adjusting, and try again. No one imagined we all would be sharing the trauma of the COVID-19 roller coaster two months after your term began. I have followed your agonizing discussions while seeking safe plans for the students, staff, and families of Beverly. I want to partner with you as part of the school committee and help solve problems. Even with a vaccine on the horizon, as yet untested on children, the hard work will continue. How will learning gaps be addressed? How will emotional needs of students and staff be met? Where will the money come from in the challenging 2022 budget? Working as an administrator and a teacher in public and independent schools, I know the trenches well. I have stood in front of kids my entire career. Along the way, I have been promoted to administrative teams and leadership positions. Valued for my ability to communicate well with students, peers, and parents, I am comfortable with making day-to-day, in-the-moment, and year-to-year policy, schedule, curriculum decisions. I am known to work tirelessly, collaboratively, and fairly to accomplish forward movement. As a teacher, I have stood in front of students of various learning styles and ages and planned, delivered, evaluated, documented, and adjusted lessons for students ranging from kindergarten through college. My formal education includes a Bachelor of Music Education from Ithaca College and a Master of Arts in the School of Education from the University of Connecticut. Go Huskies! Equally important, I have participated in many ongoing workshops, summer institutes, and guest speaker events. A highlight workshop was through Harvard University at the WEB Du Bois Institute. Over the course of a school year, educators from all across New England came together to brainstorm how to help students value each other's culture, customs, and race. It was my great honor to step up in 2011 to serve as Beverly Representative Jerry Perisela's aide at the State House when he was notified of his Army Reserve deployment to Iraq. Jerry and I were not together in the State House until he returned from active duty 18 months later. It was a huge responsibility to be Beverly's voice at the State House. The budget, constituent services, hearings, all were on me to figure out and make happen. I get how to move bills along and how the budget works. When I was trying to find available funds to replace the roof of the G A R Hall, I sought help from another legislator, John Keenan, now the current Salem University president, who took it to the floor as part of a bundle. Beverly was awarded the funds needed to replace the roof. The roof saved the building, rendering it ready for its recent full and gorgeous restoration. I'll close tonight with our 1982 arrival to our beloved Beverly. After searching extensively on both shores, we bought a 237-year-old fixer-upper, which we are still fixing up. We love it here and have sought ways to give back to Beverly. We are grateful that our son graduated from Beverly High School feeling fulfilled and ready to continue his education. I want all children in our schools to be served well. I humbly ask for your support. If chosen, I will work creatively and diligently for the families of Beverly. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bills. And next, Mr. William Carvounmiaros, please.
You got it. The pronunciation was great.
I've been practicing and I have some work to do, but thank you. I've always had a two-syllable name.
Hi, everybody can hear me? So, good evening, members of the School Committee and City Council. My name is William Carvounmiaros, and it would be my honor to serve on the Beverly School Committee. I'm a proud lifelong Beverly resident and graduate of Beverly Public Schools. My experience in the Beverly Public School System inspired me to become a teacher, so much so that I began my teaching career at Beverly High in 2009. Since starting my teaching career in Beverly, I've held a variety of different roles in the education world. I've been a teacher, a union president, and a leader in several educational nonprofits. While these different experiences would undoubtedly guide my work on the School Committee, I believe that it is my advocacy for all students and staff, as well as my record of collaboration, that would lead me to effectively serve the students and families in Beverly. I'm primarily a special education teacher in Wakefield. I also run the theater program there. Both of these roles require constant advocacy on behalf of the students. Running a theater program requires advocating for funding and opportunities for those students. In the classroom, every student has a different need, and those needs have been even further complicated by this pandemic. In my work with the Teachers' Union in Wakefield, we have invested in professional development that has allowed us to begin our work on examining our implicit bias and implementing racial justice in our schools. I know that this type of work is a priority in Beverly. I am proud of the collaborative work we have done as a district in Wakefield, and I hope my work ethic will be viewed as an asset in Beverly. It's hard to take credit for anything in public education because everything is truly a team effort. During my leadership in Wakefield, we have successfully opened a new middle school and renovated an elementary school. We have settled collective bargaining agreements for all of our units in the middle of the pandemic. This week, we had to figure out what a snow day looks like, and I still don't know what tomorrow looks like. That is the same type of work that the Beverly School Committee is already doing. We need to make sure that there are collaborative conversations that continue to happen between city government, school leaders, teachers, families, and most importantly, students. As a member of the Beverly School Committee, I would help our city continue to look to the future. Stepping into this role right now requires somebody who can jump right into the work. School districts are receiving new guidance from DESI on an almost weekly basis. In the coming weeks, the city will need to budget for the next school year, and we don't know what that looks like yet. But we have to work as a team in order to do this work well and to support all of our students. Like I said, it would be an honor to serve the city that I love. Beverly has been my home for my entire life, and it has inspired me to make real change in the world. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much, Mr. Carvounmiaros. And now we have Dr. Ken Anne McKenzie, who will present.
Good evening, everyone. I'm having some technical difficulties, so if you lose me, I apologize in advance. So, welcome everyone here tonight on the snowy day in Beverly. It's so beautiful. I am happy to be in front of our School Committee members and our City Council. My name is Ken Anne McKenzie, and I am proudly named after Ken and Anne, my parents, if you need help pronouncing that. So I'm happy to have this opportunity to speak ahead of the vote as probably one of the newer faces to you in Beverly. And I've been asked why. First, I want to point out that I've rolled up my sleeves wherever I've lived, just sort of as a compulsion, I would say. It's just my personality. I was in Brookline for several years before coming to Beverly. I volunteered with their school committee, and I particularly had a baptism by fire during this remote learning experience in the beginning of that process. At the same time, I was transitioning here to Beverly and seeing the remote learning process rolling out here in Beverly. So I'm currently on Goat Hill, living with my partner Andrew and our four children in our blended family. And as you can imagine, we've seen the range of educational experiences, issues, and all the things you could imagine with six-year-olds all the way up to two 14-year-olds. So I want to just put that out there because there's nothing like your lived experience. First of all, I've had a passion for education my entire life, as far back as I can remember. I immigrated to the United States, and I remember having an accent and being horrified in school about being called on and not knowing what was happening around me. And I always leaned on my amazing educators and, of course, my family to make me feel welcomed and to give me access to information and opportunities that were so relevant to the future I was going to have. It didn't mean that I didn't have difficult, sometimes traumatic, experiences in school, but all of those things I felt made me a resilient person, and I was determined to use that. I had no concept of racism before I went to school, ironically. But again, those were all things that I feel were helpful to me in being able to learn what the things were that I needed to pay attention to and what can be helpful to other people to challenge and overcome. One of my personal experiences that I always like to mention, if you do know me, is that I'm the mother of a son who passed away nine years ago. And I have to say that a lot of what I lived with him drives me as a mother and as somebody who learned to really value the benefits of a truly nurturing educational experience. Right until the last moment, his teacher and other classroom parents were in his hospital room with me. And there's nothing that could be ever overstated about the value of a really strong school community for families. So with that, I have materials that you all have probably looked through and gleaned, and those things are important, of course. I am currently on a DESI committee at the state level, looking at racial imbalance issues. I work with teachers every day and paraprofessionals every day with training, with professional development. I've been a former building administrator. I've struggled through difficult budgets and hiring and policy issues, and I've been at the federal government level looking at funding and policy issues. So I've seen the gamut of education and all the ranges that it comes in. And I've tried to tackle those issues by being a unifier. Solution. I thought it was particularly important that I had the referral and reference for my former Brookline School Committee folks, because it was a really tough time and a tough year. And these things can be very difficult. And to be somebody who can be about solutions and unifying folks is really important at this time. I really focus on. So while I'm really proud of my accomplishments and the other things that I've achieved, I'm most proud of being a good parent. I'm most proud of the fact that I love on everybody's children. I want there to be an equitable and amazing and excellent opportunity for all children in all of our schools. And that's something I'm committed to and have been committed to for my entire career. And I leave you with the most important thing, which is not all the accomplishments and the degrees or whatever people pay attention to. Those are nice. But it's about the fact that I believe in servant leadership. I believe in rolling up your sleeves wherever you are, how soon you get there, how long you've been there, to do something. You can affirm the things that are meaningful and good and valuable and raise up everyone. And wherever you need to grow and develop, you raise up your hands and create solutions. You don't break down, you don't critique, and you don't tear apart, but you look for ways to build each other by helping. And so that's really what I care about above it all. And if, you know, some coursework and degree work and professional experiences help me to get there, that's what I'm willing to do. But it's really about being someone with the mindset to be solution-oriented, to really, truly love children, not just your own, and to really want there to be an equitable chance for everyone. So that I tell my research methods students every year, I know we have made progress when we can no longer look at the variables and the demographics that define someone at birth and predict their life chances. We want to stop being able to do that. We want to stop being able to say, based on all of these characteristics, we know where you're going to end up. We know where you're likely to fail. What we want to do is remove barriers. We want to be able to proudly tell our children that they can truly do and be what they want to be. And as somebody who's been in Beverly, visiting over the last year and a half and living here over this very difficult time, I can say I've met some really wonderful people, some truly dedicated educators. We've seen the children struggling on the computer with people who really care about them and want them to do well. And we've met some really wonderful minds. So I do believe we have a great foundation here, and I'd be so humbled to join the team and have you all as colleagues in furthering that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKenzie. Okay, as I had explained before, we're looking for a motion, and then we'll enter into deliberations. Okay, I believe we see Ms. Visnick first, followed by Mr. Rotondo. So Ms. Visnick?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say, like, under the full disclosure, I did reach out and speak with the City Solicitor's Office. I have what I believe could be, considered by some, an appearance of impropriety, tangentially, at least, potentially. I mean, it's the appearance, right? Who is, who are we to say what other people read into something? But I filed my disclosure form with the City Clerk's Office this morning. And I believe, actually, tangentially, I have something great to say about each of the candidates. So, but I do believe that I can operate in my role this evening in an objective way. So I want to thank everybody who applied, and I also want to thank the people who didn't, who aren't here tonight, but they thought about applying, because I had a lot of good conversations. And I think that for people to even consider serving, especially in times like this, it's, it's just reminds me why my husband and I chose to live here, to build our house here, and raise our children here. Another, it's Thursday. I like to call it Thankful Thursday, so I'll just keep handing out the thank yous. Another thank you to everybody who wrote to us or called or texted Facebook message. I think that I'm a huge fan of saying, join the conversation. And hearing from people in the community is helpful to me. You know, it kind of goes in as a variable in a big equation for me to then try to churn around and make my decisions. But it is wonderful to hear from the community. So everybody who reached out, again, I thank all of them. So I think that's the end of my thank yous. And I wish to echo what Ms. A. Bell said. Three incredible candidates. I wrote down how to pronounce your name. I wrote down how to pronounce your name. Carvouniarnes? Carvouniarnes, is that close enough? Thank you for being a special ed teacher. And I have to say that your two letters of reference are from two of my favorite, absolute favorite people in the Beverly Public Schools. So that touched me deeply, and I appreciate that. Ms. Bills, excuse me, your variety of experience, especially including working with Rep. Perisella, is just incredible. And I thank you for that, too, because that in and of itself is a form of service. And Ms. McKenzie, I think your credentials are just off-the-charts impressive. But before I go any further, I really want to address a few concerns that I have heard. First is around, how long have you lived here? So I'm a transplant. I think, you know, in case anybody watching at home couldn't tell from my accent. And I don't think that you have to live here for forever or even any period of time, right? The charter just says you need to live in the ward that you represent. And I feel strongly that we are trying, as a group, to move ourselves collectively to a, what I hope is a better place. And that if we hold on to this thought, this criteria of you have to have been born here or you have to live here for some period of time, if that's our litmus test, then we're never going to, like, kind of change. We have no opportunity for change. Okay, and then the second one is around whether you have children in the public schools or whether you even have children in the schools. So I will say that when Ms. Chazza served with us on the school committee, I really appreciated her insights and the perspective of not having a child in the schools. And I only have two and a half more years. And then I won't have a child in the schools anymore. And I really wonder about whether I'll continue to serve or not and whether the community would want me to serve without a child in the schools. I think that, again, I look back and I appreciated Ms. Chazza's historical perspective. And, but there really is something to be said. And our current configuration has a wonderful smattering of children at different ages and involved in different activities.
Ms. Visnick, do you have a motion?
I do have a motion. So with all of that said, I think that collectively, we have made a resolution around diversity and inclusion. And even if all other things were equal, we have one candidate here who fills that. But I don't think all things are equal. I do believe that that same candidate is uniquely qualified to fill the seat. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we appoint the seat. We appoint, we appoint Dr. McKenzie to the seat.
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ames, with a motion on the table. And now a second. Is there any deliberation? Reminder, we're using the chat functionality. You would type "me" into the chat to be recognized. Mr. Counselor Flaherty, I think you raised your hand. Are you wanting to be called upon? Yes, okay, you're on mute. Thank you.
So this is an opportunity because I didn't get what I was looking for earlier. So I'd like to know what the other school committee members think of this nomination.
Ms. Quelo, I see you're willing to speak?
Yes. I'm going to try and pronounce this. Mr. Carvouniaris? Did I do good? I've had a couple difficult names myself. I think this is a very tough decision. I think we all have a tough decision. But I want to say thank you for coming forward to try to fill that position as a mom of two special-needs children, one of them in the high school. I think it's very admirable of you to step forward and want to help in this difficult position. And good luck to everybody.
Looking for the chat, are there other members of the school committee that wish to speak? Ms. Robinson, I think I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you hear me? Okay. I just wanted to also disclose that I also contacted, I sent a letter into Lisa Kent today about a perceived possible conflict of interest for knowing one of the candidates being related to one of the candidates. So I just wanted to disclose that. It'd still like to say that I feel that I can make a very informed decision and a fair decision. I just want to say to all of you, I think we'd be lucky to have a board of 10 people at this point because you have wonderful credentials, and I would look forward to working with any of you. I just did want to say that I liked how Mr. Carvouniaris was able to say that he could... It's hard to take credit for everything, and the ability to step right in to the position right now would be a... I just think it would be a very easy transition for him, and I just want to thank him specifically. So that's all. But thank you very much to everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I'm looking for the chat. I think I see Counselor Flowers, please.
Thank you. I'm not weighing in over much at this point because I know Counselor Flaherty asked to hear from the school committee members first. But because we were weighing in, if we had filed a disclosure of a possible seeming conflict with the city clerk's office, I wanted to mention that I also filed such a form with the city clerk just based on professional relationships that I have with both their partners of some of the candidates. And like Ms. Robinson and Mrs. Visnick, believe that I can do, make the decision impartially and fairly. But to be fully transparent, had filed that form with Ms. Kent's office. So while we were all talking about having filed our form, just letting you know.
Thank you, Counselor Flowers. Counselor Rotondo, did you want to speak now or was that?
I was just looking, Madam President, I was just trying to get clarification on our process was what I was looking for, for the candidates. So I know Dr. McKenzie's been nominated. I didn't know if we were going further with other nominations or are we just playing a conversation right now?
Yeah, we're following Robert's Rules of Order. So we have a motion on the table to appoint Dr. McKenzie, and that was seconded. So we're in our deliberative mode right now. And when we are done deliberating, we will call the roll. I'll have Ms. Kent call the roll.
Thank you.
I am looking for any other hands. It doesn't seem like anyone else wishes to be recognized. I'll check one more time before I ask Ms. Kent to please call the roll. I don't see any indication. So Ms. Kent, if you would do the pleasure.
Ames?
Yes.
Mayor Kehoe?
So the motion was to appoint Dr. McKenzie? So it's a yes or a no?
Correct. Motion on the table.
Okay. So I want to say that I am incredibly grateful as well for all three candidates coming forward. And I echo what President A. Bell said. I mean, all three of you, any of you three, all three of you would, you know, would do fantastic work on behalf of the kids and the personals in our school district. And so it's not fun to have to cast a vote for one of you. And I just want you to know that I have a great deal of respect for your willingness to come forward, all three of you. And with that said, I will vote yes to Dr. McKenzie.
Thank you.
Quello?
I will vote yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Malady?
Yes.
Rand? Robinson?
Yes.
Rotondo?
Yes.
Visnick?
Yes.
A. Bell?
Yes.
Rand, you were a yes?
I was a yes, yes. Sorry about that. I was laggy.
That's okay. And Guanci? Guanci?
You're on mute, Paul.
See, when I'm not in charge, I don't know how to behave. I'm sorry. I just want to say this is a really tough vote because the candidates are so wonderful. I've had a relationship with William since he was in high school. He's a dynamite individual, and Ms. Bills and I go back a long way. But seeing that the entire school committee would like to give Dr. McKenzie a shot, I would have to go along with that and say yes.
Okay, well, welcome to the Beverly Public School Committee, effective January 1st, 2021. Dr. McKenzie, I would be remiss if I didn't echo the thanks. This was one of the hardest decisions, and I am so grateful. I wasn't one to have to make a motion or a vote first because I really would enjoy working with all three of you. And I hope that our paths cross, that we're able to find ways in which we can all work together. Our students will benefit immensely from the talents that you all bring to our community. So thank you. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Flaherty for her service to the ward and for creating this opportunity mid-cycle to bring someone to the table that shares the passion for our students and for our community. So thank you very much. I'm sure Ms. Kent will be in touch with you, Dr. McKenzie, about the logistics of signing the book and taking the oath and all those other things that are required of a selected official. So thank you again.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Ms. A. Bell?
Yeah.
Would you like to be the one to call everybody's favorite motion?
I would love to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening. Don't all rush. Counselor Housman and Mr. Rotondo, Counselor Rotondo. And Ms. Kent, would you call the roll for us?
Ames?
Yes.
Mayor Kehoe?
Yes.
Quello?
Yes.
Dobbin?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Housman?
Yes.
Malady?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Rotondo?
Yes.
Visnick?
Yes.
A. Bell?
Yes.
And Guanci?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.